I'd like to call to order this special call session of the Mecklenburg County School Board. And for your roll call, please.
Mr. Sterdfan?
Present.
Mrs. Bailey?
Present.
Mr. Palmer?
Present.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Present.
Mr. Campbell is absent. Mrs. Garner?
Present.
Mr. Johnson is absent. Mr. Edwards? Mr. Ritchie?
Present.
All right. Do I have a motion that the school board adopts the agenda?
I move.
Second.
Motion to amend.
Do I have a motion to amend? Do I have a second?
Yes.
And what is your?
Make a motion to amend. You have it, Ms. Bailey?
I can do it if you'd like. If we could move the number four closed session after number six action and handle all of our superintendent's information items prior to that. And then on the action, we'd like to eliminate a 2019 budget and include a vote for a field trip from a group of folks from Bluestone High School. That would be my motion.
So move.
All right. And so the motion is to move the closed session after the superintendent's informa- after the action items and change the one action item from the budget to the field trip.
Correct.
Correct.
Yes.
All right. I have a motion and a second?
Question.
Yes, sir.
Just real quick, just so I can make sure I understand. So we're not going to vote on the budget tonight?
No.
We're not going to?
No, we're not going to vote on the budget tonight. We have had two days of our finance directors being involved in updates on what the new state budget is.
Okay.
And they haven't had a chance to come back and actually put it into real figures for us.
Okay.
So we will either probably vote on it with explanation of any changes at the real regular meeting.
Only eighteenth.
Yes.
Okay. Cool. All right.
All right. Any more discussion? I have a motion and a second to amend the agenda. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sterdfan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes. All right. Mr. Nichols?
Okay. Looking at superintendent's information, I may actually change the order of this a little bit because I do want to follow up just a little bit. One of the things that we are sure about from the 2019 budget is that there is in the budget state commitment to a three percent increase for teachers beginning in
It's fantastic.
Yeah. Fall of 2019. And it's two percent for state employees, three percent for teachers. I am very pleased about that.
That's fantastic.
But I do want to just relay with that the realities that we know as a recommendation or that, you know, when the state says a three percent increase for teachers, they're talking about their percent of the composite index of the standards of quality teachers. And as far as I know at this point, it's teachers only. So that is going to be a significant budget discussion for next year, the upcoming year with the Board of Supervisors, I'm sure, in light of the new schools and other things that we have in place. But, you know, we are in particular in a position that we would be hard pressed to refuse it because we're at the bottom of the barrel. And if we don't go up three percent, then everybody else does, then I think most of the state is going to be going for that because it's a critical component of keeping teachers in a day when we have such a limited number of teachers to choose from, so.
And if we don't, if the county doesn't kick in their share, then we don't get the state money, right?
And their share is the, is by far the predominant share of that.
The county's share.
The county's share of it will be by far the larger part of it, yes. So.
And that's even if you just gave it to teachers, it would still be?
Yes. Yes. There are over, there's over a million dollars worth, well, I mean, that might not be true, but we have a good number of teachers that are not actually covered by standards of quality.
Right.
And when you get to that piece of it, of those that are covered, the state's only paying thirty-seven, no, we're, we're paying the thirty-seven percent, but it's still a significant amount of money that we would be putting into it.
Okay.
Question.
Yes.
That's the fall of 2019?
Yes, sir. Not this fall.
Not this fall.
The second half of the year.
The reason why I ask that is because if it goes through what Carolina is proposing, they're going to pull it on out of teachers like Christie because it's way across the line.
Yes.
They're going to continue to build.
And they were proposing a-
Yeah, they already.
They were proposing a five percent increase.
Ah, nice.
Yeah. There are several components of the budget that are reported that we would be very pleased with because we have lost over ten percent of, and we have a higher percent of special needs population and poverty. And then there are turning loose some of the regulations around monies related to the lottery. So we feel like it's going to be some revenues that will be beneficial to us as we look at the budget. But until Christie gets back and is able to put some of those things in place, we really won't be able to come back and have some discussions about some of the things that we've been looking for. So that's why I did want to bring those things to your attention with the 2019 budget. I also want to briefly mention that on last Thursday, we had our attorney, Brad King, address our administrators on updates to the administration of the Office of Civil Rights Title IX evaluations and issues. And it was extremely good timing to have that training because on Friday at the school law conference, basically several of the lawyers that were there spent considerable time, and I know that Mr. Palmer can attest to this, actually going over some of that and basically saying Title IX can, at this point in the way that many things are being interpreted by the court system, particularly in light of transgender and sexual accusations and things of that nature, come in and really cause some legal trouble for school boards. In fact, there is a strong recommendation that all of the board attend a training session like what we did with administrators led by someone in authority like Mr. King. And so I'm going to ask you as board members to look at setting a date this summer before the new school year starts so that we can, as a board, have that training and go through it again. Because there are, there are several significant issues that are coming through that we have to be aware of and be in compliance and the school board be aware so that you can be, take the overseeing role that you do over things that we're doing. And when we come into discipline issues, we've had a couple of discipline issues that have been related to it already. And, and what they're suggesting is we're just going to see more and more of it. So we have to be very careful. I would like for you to-
There's things that some of us already know, but let me tell you folks, it's frightening to hear them go through it because as he made the phrase, we're living in a year of rage. Everyone wants to sue. So everything that we do, we're going to be right on the cuff. So he emphasized, and I think everyone in there kind of took notice like that, we best get our stuff together in simple terms because a lot of people are going to be coming after us that we don't even realize. Like some of these cases that we have in the process, they will come after us.
Well, and it's also very timely for us as we have the conversation with our architects because the, the issues of the transgender bathrooms is, is huge right now, and we need to take that into consideration. Actually, from the conversations we had with Mr. King, it's, most people think the issue of transgender bathrooms is to have a separate facility for those who want to be transgender students. It's not. It's how you will have bathrooms where they can attend as they determine with or without parental consent their gender is. That was a surprise to me, that the laws, the judges seem to be ruling in favor of students' rights whether or not parents are consenting to go along with. And that puts us in a, you know, particular issue of, of saying, we're going to support you and we're going to protect you.
Question. Go ahead, one of the handbooks. Go ahead.
Well, I was going to propose a date, but you go ahead.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Going back to the transgender, is that something that we're going to have to implement as a school system before we build the new schools to, so we don't, we don't, what you're saying is we don't have to have separate facilities, like a unisex bathroom with a door that you close?
It probably would not hurt to have a private bathroom for family needs
Right.
that may come up. But we have to be aware that the agenda of most of the transgender rights advocates is that if a student feels psychologically that they are of the other gender and their desire is to use the other gender's restroom facilities or shower facilities, that the simple fact that we would deny them that opportunity is denying them and can have psychological impact on them.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes. The, the bathroom issue, I think their, the issue is they have a choice as to whether or not they choose to go in a male or female bathroom. I didn't know it covered showers. And I think it's important that we have that in place when we talk about design of bathrooms. And I think even though courts are ruling, it depends upon what court you're at, you know, I think the, the board, we still have to have that discussion Yes. as to what format we're going to go in. And it's not necessarily a gender neutral bathroom anymore. It's the issue, based on state of mind, a boy or a girl can choose at that day and it can change from day to day which bathroom they wish to use. And I think it's great that our teachers and administrators are having that training as well as us. And I'm looking forward to seeing what the architect suggests to try to address that. I've been in one gender neutral bathroom and it was a bathroom in California, they just had all individual stalls. So it was just an open concept, all individual stalls. So I'm looking forward to seeing what the recommendations the architect's going to bring.
I was wondering if they could just make them all individual, I mean, maybe we have to have all private bathrooms.
That's been a, that has been a part of the discussion
Yeah.
that we had with Brad among administrators
Mm-hmm.
is that just every, everything have stalls and privacy for each individual in there. I don't know how that transfers over to showers. We'll have to have some discussion about that, but. I don't think it does, but.
Yeah. But couldn't they be all individual, like the family bathrooms? Couldn't they all be the family bathrooms and not have any open, I mean, no?
Well.
Just, I guess we'll talk to the, the architect about that because they could also have showers in those rooms.
We will have, obviously, a discussion with the architects
Right.
about it. But we also, I think, need to plan to have the training soon so that we can clarify questions that we might have with Brad along this line.
Right. Because I want our other students to be comfortable too, you know?
That came up in our conversation.
Right. And so I think we need to plan ahead for their comfort as well without necessarily showing animosity to anybody.
And Brad-
If we have to invest a little more in bathroom facilities so everybody can be comfortable, then so be it.
Right.
I mean, that's the world.
Brad actually brought up a couple of instances that he was aware of where young ladies of a Muslim faith and background sued because when they had the transgender child come in, they said their rights were being impinged upon. And, and they said, you just, you know, it's a no-win scenario.
Right. That's why I thought maybe
As you look at that.
they just all need to be individual bathrooms
Right.
and we just need to suck it up and pay for it upfront and nobody can-
It's, it's not only that we should concentrate on Title IX as far as being bathrooms, but they even went as far as to say you walk out on a softball field or baseball field to look at how many fields you got. How is it laid out? All of this, I guess that's why they say it's a year of rage because who would think about going out on a softball field and seeing how much difference in the two fields?
I think the discussion was actually how many lights are serving
I didn't know until this exactly.
Yeah. Because that's equal opportunity for athletics, right?
Right.
Correct.
Yeah.
Do they have a common sense statute anywhere?
Not yet.
I mean, it's kind of somebody, backlash is, I mean, you can't continue down this road forever because if you do, public education can disappear. That's what's going to happen because we're going to dilute it in, in, in these fashions to the point that the private schools are going to do it and then they don't care. You know, that's going to change everything because people are, they're tired of this. I mean, you know, I mean, if I had my way, I'd, I'd go in, I'd go with Matthew sanitation and forget about the bathrooms. We'll line up cordial across the end of the football field and you'd put, you'd go in anyone you want to.
Yeah.
Well, they all look alike.
It could very well be that this discussion crosses over into private school lines. And it may not be just a public school issue. It could be a societal issue where even if you're in a private school, that, that you would still have to abide by whatever the rules are of the land, so.
You see, when you don't take federal money, that shuts out a lot of things.
But they still, but there's still things that you can't do in a private school that it, but I, I, have you talked with Mr. King to see when, when his schedule might be open for us?
I have not. No.
I mean, I would suggest either the week of the 25th of June or the week of the 23rd of July. That's after our general meet, that's after our general, monthly general meetings. And, and, because he's going to need probably several dates to check to see, I don't know how that works with everybody else.
How long does this maybe have to be? Did he say?
Well, we had the training session with him on Thursday and it was two hours at least.
He could probably abbreviate some of that for what would pertain to
Specifically.
to boards. I mean, he, he was talking there with people hands-on all day, so it may not be as long as what he used for them.
Um.
I'd talk to him and see what he's got available.
Mr. Palmer, the presentation at the law conference, how long would you say that was?
We definitely could not go beyond a day. They had at least two hours, maybe a little bit more, with the question and answer period because all of it was not pertaining to Title IX. And if you want to go through the whole ordeal, or even go through the other thing as well, like how many days a child could be suspended, et cetera, et cetera, from here on in, all of that would take you probably three, or take the whole, uh, form.
Well, we can probably update on most of that, but it's the issue of civil rights and the title issues that I think-
I would bet two hours.
Okay. I'll, I will get in touch with him and ask him about an evening on either of those weeks and get back with you on that.
Monday nights are, birthday only night that I can come.
I think Monday nights are, are good. Monday nights are good. I mean, I-
Unless you want to do the week of the fourth, July 2nd through the 6th.
I, I, I think that would be a hardship
Being this, off the whole week.
on people to do that.
So we're talking about not that we-
Is that what you're thinking?
Well, that, that, I was, that, that was the point because he's got to go back and check, I mean, we can pick any date we want, but if it doesn't work for Mr. King, it's not going to work for us.
Can you give us some dates?
If, if I make recommendations of these two weeks and I don't get a date from him, I will ask him to give us a follow-up date.
And a Monday. Ask him for a Monday.
And a Monday, yeah.
And, you know, the months of June and July, we, we need to get some of this stuff done and out of the way
Right.
before school's closed.
Well, our plan, we've, we've now had the training for administrators and in the first weeks before students come back, we will have the training for other, other staff. So it will be the school board that we would need to make this plan for.
Okay.
Okay. Beyond that, I don't know how long it will take. There were some questions, I think, on the secondary handbook and I have asked Mr. Matney to be available. You all have had a copy of that.
Let's get to, I would-
Mr. Upton.
Get to Mr. Upton
Yeah.
and then we can talk about handbook stuff.
Okay. That's fine. I was trying to give you as much time with him as possible.
Right.
So let's then go to the updates on the school design.
We appreciate the opportunity to be here, listening to your earlier conversations. Is that better? Listen to your earlier conversations. I need to say right up front, we're making good progress. We're getting closer. Every time we hear comments, we've had lots of meetings with lots of people and every time we evolve a little closer and closer to the target. Now, at this point, I believe that if we can get a meeting within the next week or two weeks at the most, that we need to get in and we can nail down the program because it's getting very close. And if we can make sure that, of course, we've got to nail down the budget first because we have to design to the budget and we need to get the property closed on if possible so we can start that part of the process. But the program itself is, is coming and we're getting very close. Getting back to the restroom issues and things that I heard some discussion a few moments ago, we have a plan. We haven't laid out those. We're going to lay out large-scale suggestions and we have ideas and the basic ideas is to have an area that you have toilet compartments that you go into and maybe have slightly different sections. And then when you come out, we can do, either way, we can have the labs and the mirrors outside and they can be shared as, and again, spread out in slightly different sections so people have a little choice to go to, but anyone can choose and yet you would have privacy. And the next step would be to put everything like a family restroom in its own compartment. That would require a little bit more space and a little bit more money and so we'll talk about ways and we'll come with sketches and drawings and show you what we propose and see what your requirements are. But we know we have to do that or else you're going to have trouble down the road, so we might as well go ahead and plan for it now. So that's what our thoughts are. And then we'll take more square footage than the typical restrooms because you have more individualized circulation space. And of course, on top of this, we have to meet all the American with Disabilities Act requirements, which makes you have certain spaces that wheelchairs can turn and people can move. So all that has to be planned into it as well. But we, we will have large-scale drawings for you. Hopefully, next time we meet, that will illustrate that and illustrate all the other spaces that are scaled that we hopefully can stand in front of you and say, we believe this is the final schematic design. And we know all the staff and teachers were promised a chance to look at those at the end of the summer when they come back to school. So of course, we may get some comments there that may continue to involve it and that's okay. As long as we're making progress toward the target, the end goal, I think we're, everything will be okay. So we just need to keep making forward, motion and we're good. We have a couple of things we'd like to show you.
Ms. Upton, can I ask you, you mentioned about getting the property squared away. Are you all involved with the VDOT aspect of that?
We've, we've asked several times if they needed any help. We did receive a call this week from the individual from Raleigh that's doing the traffic study. Asked if he could meet with us and present what they've done, which implies that they must be at the conclusion of it or very close to it. And we said, by all means, yes. So we're, we're coordinating a meeting with them, so we should have that information in a few days. And we have made it known, we, we've made it known that we are prepared to meet with them any place, any time to help expedite it. So it looks like we're getting pretty close.
All right. Thank you.
So, so, in fact, I went up again tonight on the way up here and looked at the intersection where the existing road comes out to look at how we can make that turn. And I don't think we will have too much trouble modifying that intersection so we can make that turn. At worst, we would need maybe a few feet back to help us make a good radius and we can make that work. I don't think that will impact us in a negative way at all and will actually help us in some ways because we will have more room to stack buses before they get to Route 58. So we feel pretty good about that.
Thank you.
Anyway, we, we, we're still, you know, I know you are looking at things and you see many, many plans and, believe me, good progress been made, but there's work yet to be done and there's no question about that. See, my click is right here. Oh, that helps. You've seen this site plan before, pretty much. You know, the fields and stuff we're talking about, we are required to have fields similar to this. That doesn't mean that little changes can't be made. We are going to be required to have the appropriate restroom facilities. Again, there are certain things that we do we keep in mind, like the fieldhouse, the proximity to the building. We cannot have as many requirements if we keep it within a certain distance so we can help with costs there. But now we're proposing a facility that will accommodate the number of individuals that will be in the stadium because it's been reduced to a fairly small amount, two thousand, twenty-five hundred, two thousand plus five hundred for visitors. So that's not excessive. So that should work and not be a real cost for the community. We're still holding places. We're leaving them there as placeholders, but we're not planning to do anything at this time. But hopefully down the road, things like school board office, the aquatic center, the shop, those are just placeholders there as part of the master plan. We have no budget money for those at this point, but who knows what the future may bring. The, the site, the site is a beautiful site. It's going to work really well if we can get it closed. It's, the building is going to be beautiful and the site is going to be a great distance from the highway and it's going to be displayed really, really well, properly lit and properly designed. It's going to really be a positive view and people are going to love it when they see it and they're going to feel like, if anyone is honest, they're going to feel like you had a great vision putting it there. It's going to work and, and you're going to be happy with it. I have no doubt about that. No questions on the site. I think you've seen that before, so.
Has the, it looks like the barn's been taken off here too?
The, the barn is not shown here now.
Okay.
It looks like there's a square for it right under the place that says Stadium 2500 seats.
Oh, yeah.
This here?
Mm-hmm.
Now, that, that is-
It's in the writing.
That is here.
See that right there?
Is it here?
Okay.
I'm sorry.
It's-
Oh, here, yes.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
All right.
Yes, okay. I thought we still had it on, but I didn't remember taking it off. Okay. Yes, it's a place identified for it as part of-
And it's the, the aquatic center, is that inside the parking lot there?
This, this is the space that has been identified there.
Okay.
And it may not be that large, but we identified the space that would accommodate the larger facility.
Okay.
And of course, school board office, master plan, we think that's a good potential location depending on the purchase of the property and the shop. And, and we would also, what we will propose to you is moving the fieldhouse more up in this area, probably under the grandstands. And that way you can share toilet facilities with these ball fields and save from having to build another facility. We can have storage and restroom facilities and snack bar and everything in one building and that should save some money. And over here, we probably will need a small restroom facility and snack bar, but that can be very minimal size and it should work out very well. You noticed that one time we had a road connection here because there was a cut through, but we removed that because we were told that VDOT doesn't want to have any connection to Route 58 at this point. But later on, I think if you build this, you should re-have that conversation so, so that can be a future discussion that we probably shouldn't have at this point.
Question. So, Mr. Upton, is, I, I see at the bottom there it says Highway 58.
Yes, sir.
Is there, is there going to be one intersection off of 58 that goes into the new school or none it proposed right now?
What we are proposing is to have, have a- What we are proposing is to have, have a road connecting, entering into and exiting from the school, right where the existing crossover is. Because we were hoping to use the deceleration lanes and acceleration lanes that are already there. They may want those to be enlarged, but hopefully, we can save a lot of money by doing that. So we aren't really asking for a major change in traffic patterns, just maybe some improvements. And over here, at Windbridge Road, we will probably need a deceleration lane here. I'm pretty sure they will require that, and we anticipate that. And we can't see the intersection up there, but we're going to have to improve the radius there. Buses could make that turn, but it would be awkward. And so, we need to, I pasted off today, we need to improve that intersection. And I think we will have a good flowing site at that point. And that, like I say, if the building is sitting there the way, this is the high point of the site, it's going to be setting, it's going to be a beautiful setting for the building.
Yeah, I have one, one question. Have, have the engineers ever assessed the amount, the number of cubic yards of stone that's going to have to be moved? I mean, you know, at one point, they gave us a report, it's been about seven, eight months ago, that it was, at one site, it was going to take a hundred thousand cubic yards of stone to be moved, I think. And then across the road, when they looked at that one, it was even more than that. Are they giving us an estimate before we bid this, on how many cubic yards will have to, or field will have to be moved? Or we're going to wait till the bid? And, you know, the, what worries me is if, if we bid the school, and then we get in, then if they have a rock clause in there, we come in and have to spend three or four million dollars moving rock, and that could happen. It seems like engineers that have already done site borings on this can, they can usually tell us how deep it is and how much will have to be moved before we bid.
The question, oh, I'm sorry, the question that I've asked, Mr. Evans, we haven't been given a definitive answer on that.
Right.
But what we must do is when we do the geotechnical report. I'm hoping that the county, when they did their early investigation to see if the site was suitable, that when they did that work, the whole purpose would have been to determine if it was suitable, which means they wouldn't have had a crisis issue with rock. But I'm concerned about that. So when we do a geotechnical investigation, at that point, we're going to need to know exactly where the rock is, and make that determination. But, but it, it's my, I guess I used the word assumption, which I hate to, that once they did the site investigation and made a determination about the site, that they thought it was reasonably appropriate, and that the rock wouldn't be a kill-the-project-type issue. But I don't know that. I really don't know the answer to that question.
Okay.
And soon as we turn a geotechnical investigator loose, we will find out, and we will be able to answer that question pretty closely at that point.
Mr. Upton, have you looked at Hurt and Profits' report?
I don't have that report on the rock.
Because.
And I would like to.
We have that information.
We did. But it was a, it was a, it doesn't place the school. We had no, we had no school site drawings. They just had a generic school that they stuck up in the middle of this thing. And then they, they went out and did, I don't know how many site borings they did, but they did estimate a ton of rock.
But they also, but there were also drawings of the property. And there was, there were markings on particular portions of the property.
Yes.
That indicated rock. And you've kind of chosen the place where there's the last cut, correct?
There, yes. This is the best place to cite it, as far as the grades are concerned. But I can't say that's the best place because of the rock location. Now, their, their school, I think they had it about right in here.
They did.
A little bit closer to the road.
I think they had it a little closer to the road, yes.
So, so.
Would it be helpful to you for us to get that report to you?
I would like to have that. I would very much like to have that. Can I call Wayne Carter and see if he'll furnish it to me?
I would, I don't see why not.
Okay.
Yeah, we already have it.
If, if he won't give you his, I'll give you mine.
Okay, okay. All right. We will request a copy of that tomorrow. And, and I would be surprised if they made a determination to buy this site if the rock was hard to avoid. But it's possible.
They gave us an estimate in that report of how many thousand cubic yards of stone would need to be moved. It was in there.
And yet, they still recommended this site?
But see, the thing is, that's one thing, when the engineer reports it. But then, when you talk to a grading contractor, and you tell him that number of cubic yards, and he puts a number on it, that's when things really get serious.
So they haven't put a price on the number of cubic yards?
They actually did associate a price. There were general costs associated with all of that. I mean, we had a general cost associated with all of the sites that we were looking at. So I think, it may be a rough estimate, but that's more information than you have right now.
Yes, yes. We will request Mr. Carter to give us a copy of that.
Paul, do you have a copy of that? Here, do we have one here at the office that we can give?
We were all given one.
Well, I thought if there was a copy here, he wouldn't have to go to Wayne Carter to get it.
I don't know that I have a copy of that, that I can put my hands on this evening. So I will look for it. But I do know we have had that information.
Okay.
Okay.
If, if I don't hear, otherwise, we will request a copy from him tomorrow morning. And if it doesn't come right away, we will ask you to make one available.
I'm sure that Wayne will get it to us.
Hurt and Profit will send you one, I'm sure. We paid for it, you know.
The board of supervisors paid.
Well, it's still our money.
Yeah.
Okay.
Came out of our money. Came out of our pot of money, believe me.
And it's also my understanding that the, as far as the site's concerned, the sanitary sewer is no longer part of this budget.
Correct.
So that's, I haven't seen anything in writing or anything, but I'm taking, having confidence that that's the case.
At the, at the finance committee, and at the public hearing, it was made clear that the sewer was no longer a part, that was going to be expected of the school board building, that it would be a part of economic development.
Perfect. So that, that is, that's a real big help. That includes the sanitary sewer, or the design of the sanitary sewer. So that will save money across the board. Okay, perfect.
I mean, as we're looking at the site plan, it would be my understanding that it's taking, it's getting the pipe to the little building that you'd have down here.
That's right, yes. Somewhere we would anticipate.
We would then, part of our expense would be in getting the piping from there to the school.
Uh-huh.
And other locations.
That's what we understand at this point. And we just wanted to make sure we were all together on that. All right, let me move.
It's all downhill from here to here.
Good to go there, aren't we? Yes.
Which is a good thing.
Now, based on our discussions, we have a new plan here. And this plan makes lots of modifications, but it's basically two major modifications. One is the auditorium has been relocated from this area to this area. And that was a discussion and a request that was made. And I like that, because what it does, it saves atrium space. Now, the auditorium is the way it's designed. It will end right, come right out into the commons area. So, so the flow of large numbers of people will work out really well. You will have a lot of spaces since you come out, so people can gather and have refreshments, or visit, or do whatever needs to be done. And those same spaces, of course, will provide lobby area for the gyms. So that makes really good use of those spaces. So that is going to help us. And the auditorium has been changed from, we've had different versions, from eight hundred to no auditor. This is a twelve hundred-seat auditor. And maybe one or two over that, like twelve oh seven is the way it works out. So the auditorium is over twelve hundred. And it would be an amazingly beautiful auditorium or performing arts center. And, and it saves as much space as you possibly can. And we also have the art and the band and the choral, the music and all that's close to it. So it's a good flow. So it would work out really well.
Would that be, would that be big enough to hold a graduation?
Yes.
If we have three hundred graduates?
What we would have is a graduation ceremony, that students would be able to actually have at least two tickets. And then, the overflow could go into the gym area, and they could simulcast to the gym.
Okay, okay. Because I was going to say, if it wasn't big enough for graduation, then it may be too.
That's smart, yes.
It wouldn't make sense to have it so big.
But it's also, but it is, it's big enough, just as an example, we have now a partnership with Orchestra 2,100, that looks to bring all of our primary students in through the year to engage orchestra and preparation in art and music. And they, in order to accommodate the three classrooms, kindergarten, first and second grade, we would need something of this size to be able to do it. Until we get this built, we will be busing our students to Henderson to be able to make use of their large auditorium for the performance that would, they would take apart of.
But the twelve hundred seats, is that, is that, we would reasonably expect twelve hundred people to attend events we would have there?
I think we could.
Or eighty percent, okay.
I think we could, yes.
I have, I just said, I have no idea.
When you look at events, they're currently, the largest, to my knowledge, auditorium in the county is the Robert E. Lee Auditorium in Chase City.
It's five hundred.
That's five hundred and some. And, and that's the seats. Then I've, I've seen it like seven hundred built in there, and I've seen it crowded. Unfortunately, the most crowded I've seen it is during funerals.
Right.
So we could host, you know, I think we could host what we need to with this, this size.
Question. Mr. Upton, concerning the auditorium, is there a space for a green room or anything in that? Or will we use one of the rooms adjacent to that?
We do have some restroom and dressing area there, but we need to, what we need to do for all these spaces is blow them up to large scale, show you the detail, and then meet and go over the details.
Okay.
And, and to make sure that we have everything you want without letting it grow. Maybe we can redistribute some of the spaces, but probably would be hard for it to grow because of the budget. But we can redistribute, and we need to do that. So we will, we will put that into a much larger scale, and sit down and look at the details, you know, the restrooms and the dressing area and all of that. And make it as efficient as we possibly can.
One of the things that I appreciate, from the perspective of the safety committee in particular with this, and we saw this in Louisa County, is that students during the day come into this end, and their academic and career and technical programs are here. They use these facilities for fine arts and for physical education. But all, all external activities related to sports, and this activity is coming into this end, and has access to our current facilities, making the most use of the dining facilities, and our, even our catering program, you'll see that culinary arts is right here next to that. So we're making the most efficient and most safe space available in this.
So culinary arts can use the kitchen spaces.
Yes.
We would have to have one additional separate space like we do now at art school. With culinary arts, we'd be able to use that as part of it.
Right.
Mr. Upton?
Yes, sir.
The middle school auxiliary gymnasium, I guess that's going to be listed as an alternate? Or is that included in this as far as members?
The, the middle, the auxiliary gym for the middle school, and the auxiliary gym for the high school, which is broken down into wrestling and weight room. Both of those identified as add alternates at this point, which what it means to us is that those will be designed, and those will be bid. And if we get a good bidding climate, then they will fit within the budget. If not, those would not be built at this time.
Okay.
One more question.
Yes, sir.
On the, on the auditorium, is a, when we have like concerts with instruments and so forth, is there any closer way to get them in than the entrance up, that comes in where it says outdoor learning environment, coming down the hallway? Is there any way to get them to the stage? Or, I mean, is that a thought? I just don't know.
Yes, sir. Well, as you said, they can come in here, because the bus drop-off will be out here. But also, this will be a major entrance here. The largest parking lot, the student parking lot, is in this area. And there will be a nice walkway where you could come right into here. You could also enter here and come right down to the auditorium. So it's pretty accessible, but you do have to walk a little bit. It's not connected to the outside. But it's, it's reasonably convenient. I think it would be, work okay.
Right.
And of course, you have the band room here. I'm sorry, Ms. Bailey.
I'm sorry. I was looking at the seats in the dining areas. So it says three hundred and sixty-seven seats on the middle school half, and four hundred and forty on the high school part. And so, Mr. Nichols, in speaking with our cafeteria staff, so are we still planning three and four blocks for, three for the middle school, and then four for the high school for eating?
We, if.
Is that our plan at this point?
If I can interject, if it's okay, we, we plan seating for three bells, three lunch periods for the whole school.
For the whole school?
Uh-huh. No, four bells. Just three.
Three bells. So that we'll be able to rotate everyone through the high school dining in three, I guess?
That's what we, that's what we're designing for, yes.
As we're doing now.
Okay. And the, one, one other thing I noticed in the middle school gym, with, let's see, what is that total? Five hundred and seventy-four seats, which I guess that'll have to work. And that, that makes, having an auditorium with more seats even more necessary, because those middle school students shouldn't have to rotate in, you know, partially to get any kind of, you know, assembly time. So they, they could all rotate into the auditorium at the same time.
Yes.
With staff.
Uh-huh. So they can meet in the auditorium and for major athletic events if you need it to. You could probably schedule with the high school and have an event.
Sure.
In the high school gym, which would give you a lot of capacity.
Two thousand seats.
So thirteen hundred high school students, that's, we're going to be really close to that capacity when we open. Right? So hopefully, we don't get too much bigger.
We will, we will have a little flex in there, but we will need to plan for additional growth if, should that happen.
And I'm guessing that restrooms are on the side here? Is that what the, they look like doors to the outside. I guess you guys will work that in at some point?
Yeah, we're going to have to lay these restrooms. We have restrooms here, restrooms here.
Okay.
And, and scattered throughout, but we're going to need to reconfigure those to accommodate the, the multiple uses of the restrooms.
So for the auditorium, they're just going to use the gyms, the restroom that's in front of the gym?
Yes, uh-huh. See, before, we had, when we were here, we had restrooms up there. But these restrooms are so convenient for everyone. So it will, again, save a lot of, lot of space for us. One other major change we've made here, that I want to point out to you, is the career centers. You look at that, and you probably say, "Well, that's kind of peculiar there." What we were trying to do is to create, in each career center, a classroom, and, and a storage area, storage combination, secure area. So our idea is, this is storage room, that's the storage room. So that's a solid wall here, of course, with doors coming in from here, just from the career Of course with doors coming in from here, just from the career center. And then what we propose is to have a place there, breakout, where it will be a nice lounge area where students can gather, they could go down and have lunch if that is permitted by the principal. And they could have seating, we, we plan to, as you look down these hallways, see a nice graphic there which identifies the career center. And, and have an all glass wall on the classroom, so like this classroom, this classroom. We're gonna propose to you, they will have glass here, glass here, a glass walls here. And then outside have quite a bit, we want the school to be open and bright as possible, but we're thinking ahead about the security. So the, each storage areas, you see those are back to back. We're planning that to have all solid, secure walls and secure doors. So, so all the students will have a good place to go. And yet the field hopefully will be open and bright and cheerful and not confining. So we feel pretty good about that. And one reason we did this angle is we are trying to give space to students together and at least a number of square footage possible. So we think that will work and that will be quite beautiful there and we will have an outside yard here with some screenings so that you can have those things that you need outside of the career center that will still be attractive the way it's screened. So it should be a very, very beautiful space and the career centers are really in, in the heart of the school. You look anywhere from these quarters, you look down and you see those. And it's not gonna be a space that looks uninvited, it's gonna be a space where students want to be. We've done something here that you've probably seen, we have the media center here. At one time it was on the other side, it makes sense. We looked at possibly putting the media center here, that we thought that might be a little better. We have an open courtyard here. That, that is there for a couple of reasons. If you want to have a teacher development center, we could use part of it. If we need some additional classrooms, we could use some, add a couple of classrooms there as well. And so that gives us a little growth space that's really nice, that will look attractive and give openness to the media center. So when you're in there, you could go out to a courtyard here and read and study and, and have outdoor landscape type of environment. So that would be a very beautiful, attractive place and a good community gathering place as well for small meetings that wouldn't be appropriate for the auditorium.
In these, and I'm just, this is gonna be real stupid, but I, I know we're looking at green spaces and all here. So I mean, when you say green space, I mean nice trees and, you know, it's just not gonna be little shrubs or something. Maybe actually, you know, something inviting, looking for the students to be able to go out and commune in these areas. Like benches and so forth like that?
Yes.
To convene in these areas?
And, and this courtyard here, and those other courtyards, we, what we, what we want to do is to have, we will propose, and then we will do what you ask us to do. We will propose landscape furniture, sitting areas, and we will probably propose a couple of box areas with trees that are easy to maintain.
Well, you, you mentioned, you know, when you look down the corridors.
Oh, here.
Over where the career technical center is gonna be.
Yeah.
You know, if they look down those corners, they're just not gonna see those things.
No, no, oh, out here, we will have that enclosed here, there where you have storage, but then we will have landscaping around the building.
Okay.
And the whole idea, I think if we can have the building, it's kind of framed with landscaping. And then you have smaller shrubbery and a few strategic places out front. And then of course off to the sides, whenever we can save trees that don't block sightlines or need to be moved because of grading, we will have the natural woodlands as much as possible there. Those are the kind of things we will propose to you.
Mr. Upton, can you help me find the, the nurses' area? School nurse and her-
Oh, that, with that, here we have, the, you see the administration for the high school and middle school. This part right here is also labeled administration. The clinic and nurse will, we propose will be part of this area here.
That's good, thank you.
And also over here for the middle school.
Okay.
And the counseling session area, school counselor session.
We, the counselors-
School counselors.
Yes, we, yes, we expect the counselors to be here on this side, the clinics maybe be on this side. And we also have a space for assistant superintendent to be on the upper floor, which I don't have here. Assistant principal, I'm sorry, not school superintendent. We didn't want, we don't have school board office here, sorry, Paul, I gave a bad information there. Assistant principal to be up on the second floor where, at a strategic location to monitor what's going on. So what we would do, if you feel that we're in the right direction here, then we are going to detail these spaces so you can see exactly what we're proposing to have in there. And then you can say, no, go back to drawing board, that's fine, that's what we want to do, the school has to be right. And we're gonna detail all the, all the spaces, the library, all the career centers and typical classrooms. And then give you a large scale of those, probably in three D. I know we will do it eventually in three D, but so you can see that and be able to make directions, give directions and make decisions on that.
And for clarity, if I might, from the perspective of students, middle school students and high school students being separated, the entrance, the buses will come in and unload and high school students will go in here?
No.
No, the buses, the bus is intended at this point to drop off students here. And we are hoping to have a covered way for them. And then, and once they get out of the bus, they're on the bus. If you had separate buses, we would do it totally different. But since they're on the same buses, then the high school students would come in here and the middle school students would go there. And, and they're totally separated from dining. The gym, the auditorium, they, you can close down so that they don't go in there at the same time except after hours when the parents here. Media center, everything is, is gonna be separated in the schools, during school day, unless you make a conscious decision that a middle school student needs to go take an advanced class. And that will, that student will need to be monitored and make sure that's where you want them to be.
I have a question, Mr. Upton.
Yes, ma'am.
In the middle school gym, you've, you've labeled that gymatorium and there's a stage there, can you elaborate?
We, often we will put a small stage that will allow you to have activities in there. And I don't know that you actually need it with a nice auditorium. So we may recommend eliminating that and just keep that as a gym. If you did not have the auditorium, you would almost have to have the gymatorium. I would say that we probably should eliminate that because it's not necessary.
Well, one, one of the, I mean, I'm, it's still rolling around in my head, you know, with a thousand kids at this middle school, what PE class is gonna look like for that many students in that one gym. It, it is a concern of mine, particularly, you know, we, we have two gyms now. And we're gonna combine all that into one. And I see that there, there are health classrooms, but Dr. Mattney, maybe you could elaborate. All the middle school students have to have PE, correct? No, can you elaborate on how many students might be taking advantage of PE courses in one year?
Six and seventh grade will be a requirement mandated by the state, eighth grade is an option. Eighth graders can opt out if they can provide both by approval of some other physical activities so as to increase their opportunity to maintain their involvement in other elective districts they have for like one.
So then we might have as many as, well, we'll have six hundred for sure, taking PE. Now, but they don't take it all year. But, so three hundred would take it in the fall and three hundred would take it in the spring, is that fair to say?
If they follow a four by four block, some currently do an A B block where they take it every, every day.
So the maximum number of children then would be six hundred in the sixth and seventh grade, possible.
I think that's fair.
And then maybe half of those might take it their eighth grade year? I mean, what's, what's the experience been?
A little higher than half, taking it, opting out is the exception rather than four.
So that's four full blocks then, we're, we're offering PE every block, correct?
One thing that we would propose is when the bleachers are pushed back, we would have a drop curtain right through here. So you would have almost two gyms there with the drop curtain between them. And the auxiliary gym would be great to have. We hope that the plans work out so that we could construct that.
I guess the good news is we will have all of the faculty for PE in one area. So it's not like we're skimping on faculty and so they're just gonna have to get creative on how they schedule what and when. And I'm sure you're gonna see to all of that.
That's really good. It will approach to two thousand. And it, I won't say it went off without a hitch, but it's entirely manageable and terrible.
Very good. That, that's encouraging to hear, Dr. Mattney, thank you.
But with that, with that divide or gym, I've seen that to be to the point where you almost have two classes all day long.
Uh-huh.
And that's a great help.
We're dropping the-
Actually, you can look at that as being two gyms when you look at it that way.
And when you drop that curtain, that works pretty good and the spaces are open up pretty nicely when you move the bleachers back. So it's, it's a pretty nice space, not totally perfect, but pretty close to it.
Right, just, just for, just to throw this out there, right now, we have our, our volleyball courts set up the length of the basketball court. With some extra space here, I wonder if it would be possible when we're planning this space to set it up both ways. So for competition volleyball, do it the length of the court. But for PE class or for practice purposes, have two volleyball courts set up the width. Um, that's, I'm just throwing that, that out there.
I think we need to look at the marking and if you would help me by making it out, that's, what, what we need to do is just what
Correct.
Ms. Bailey just described, have the competition volleyball here and then have it on both courts.
And one of the, one of the things that allows you to do is you can then host weekend tournaments, um, if you can have two games going at one time and that, that's helpful.
Totally makes sense, I agree. Totally makes sense. And over here in this, when we push, in the high school gym, when we push the bleachers back, we also are gonna propose a track striping on the floor so you can have indoor track on the floor without having to spend too much money to accomplish that.
You've got to have somewhere to sit if you move the ends of the gym back where you have the whole gym.
Not for weekend tournaments, people bring chairs in and just sit around.
You have chairs, just give it up a bit.
It, it works, it works. Webb does it, it works.
Should I move on now?
On the, um, I, I have another question.
Yes, sir.
On the high school end of it for the competitions, do we have sufficient room here for coaches and opposing teams to have the facilities that they need and the referees to have the facilities that they need? Because currently we are hurting for that.
We do have facilities planned for them, a shower and dressing. And we are also considering having the coaches and referees instead of having separate facilities in the field house at the stadium, that if they could come in here and use the facilities here to dress and change, then that would save a block of money. Or we could put it out there if that sharing, it's not gonna work. But we do have that. And, and I'm listening to your earlier conversation and, and maybe we need to design those restrooms with a little bit more flexibility as well, I would think.
Well, that's a conversation that we're gonna specifically have to have with our lawyer and get advice about moving forward and what he sees going, taking place.
We're gonna come to you with a plan for all the facilities and, and, and see if, what, what works best for you.
Okay.
And then the cost.
Okay.
I just kept speaking on that too. And the reason why I brought that up earlier when we were discussing those transgender and those type facilities. And I just noticed in a lot of the new stores that they're building, the bigger stores, they have that family style restroom that, you know, anybody can go in and lock the door behind them, you know, if that's what you so desire, so.
It's almost everywhere, it's commonplace and in the new shopping mall or any place now, airports. So every place has been constructed that way now, so.
We have our only ten million dollar bathroom facility on the east coast, it'd be nice, wouldn't it? We could even attach a school to it.
Attach a school, yeah. All right, Paul, did it, move on. Yeah, I think that's just second floor, it's basically just the detail, of course you've seen the rendering. Uh, this right here is another run through of the math. And as we refine it, then I will come to you with another run through soon as we do that. But basically, the high school and the middle school construction costs, we anticipate to be about eighty-seven million dollars. And, and then with the contingency, which we hope we don't have to spend on rock or anything, that would bring it up to ninety, because we're proposing a three percent contingency, which is pretty typical. Then the project costs, all the associated costs, which would bring the construction of the main building up to one hundred and five. And then the anticipated cost is the same as we had before, except we've removed from here the sanitary sewer. So that has been reduced. We do not have a money in there for the cemetery because we don't have a budget for that yet. But we don't think that would create a hardship for us. But I need to, I need to do some research on that and find out what that cost is gonna be. So anyway, if you take the main building budget of a hundred and eight and then the alternates for the auxiliary gyms and then the stadium and field house, or that shouldn't say stadium, it should be just field house, the stadiums included, would be three and a half. So then if you add that in, it would come up to as much as a one hundred and fourteen million. So if we don't do the alternates, of course it would come to one oh eight. And if we, the only thing we can do at this point is reduce the square footage. And we will have suggestions and possible ways to do that. None of them, I don't think you want to do because you will be shortchanging the school. But we can do it if we need to. And if you guys give us instructions saying our budget is not going to exceed the hundred million, then we're gonna reduce the cost by eight million dollars, one way or the other. And, and we hope we don't have to do that, but we, we'll do what we need to do.
So you, so Mr. Upton, what you're saying is to build an adequate school to move forward with the career and technical centers and the new DOE requirements with the portrait of a Virginia graduate, we need the one fourteen, three forty-three.
Yes, yes, this is what your budget really should be. And in no case should it be less than that. And if you do, you're gonna be making pretty big sacrifices. You know, like the auditorium or reducing that and stuff like that, you know. We can make the media center smaller. It's the things we can do and you know what they are and I don't wanna just sit here and make it a painful discussion. But we, this is, this is really what should be funded.
As I said in my last board meeting, I mean, we owe it to our children to fund an adequate school, not inadequate school. Because again, we do things for a long, all the time over accounting, fifty, sixty years.
And you're building four schools, when you think about it, you're building four new schools. You, two middle schools and two high schools and, and for, to build four schools for this much money, it's not much. If you look at it by itself, it's a huge amount, but, but.
You don't have copies of that, it's one idea.
I do have a copy, I can-
Well, I see everybody standing up and writing stuff down.
I wrote it down.
Okay.
Yes. Yes. Thank you.
I thank you very much and I know you're working hard.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
In conversations with the board of supervisors as well as with others in the community, including Mecklenburg Business Education Partnership- In conversations with the Board of Supervisors as well as with others in the community, including Mecklenburg Business Education Partnership. I've asked the question about the opportunity to go to some of the locality that could include Microsoft or others that are willing to give. Can you give me a sense of, for instance, the auditorium, the difference in the cost of an 800 seat auditorium and a 1,200 seat auditorium? So that we could, in that case, see about raising money for that extra component?
We'll give you any kind of combination of breakdowns that you want and we will do that if you'll be kind enough. So we'll give you the estimated cost for the 1,200 versus 800 seat auditorium.
And then the other, one of the other options that I had asked about was the field house. But you don't have the, the, I'm sorry, not the field house, but the barn in this, do you?
No, because we understood that someone was going to.
That's, that's the scenario that we were looking at, okay? So that's not, I, the only other thing that I could then look at is maybe looking to raise money for these alternates that you have now, the auxiliary gym and the field house. That is correct?
Yes, the auxiliary gyms would really make the school better, but you could have a good functioning school without those. But it, it would be, it would make the school operate a lot more efficiently if you had the auxiliary gyms.
But I dare say that the difference in an 800 seat auditorium and a 1,200 seat auditorium is not 8,143,000 and 100.
That's correct, that won't get you there.
It's not gonna get me from 108 down to 100.
Probably what we would have to do is to reduce the auditorium, leave off the auxiliary gyms. We'd probably have to maybe consolidate a couple of Chris and if possible. And there are other things that we'd have to do, look at the classrooms and look at scheduling and see if we can somehow get more.
That's requiring that we look at real flexible scheduling.
It would, it, it could be a challenge scheduling if we do that, but we have to look at.
And there are, there are expectations by numbers of students that we have from the Department of Education for amount of space to take care of that many students.
Yes, yes, and we're, we're.
So we're, we're cutting into what the Department of Education would require for the number of students that we have.
Exactly. And we should, we should not do that.
And, and with that, what Paul just said, a lot of, Mr. Nichols just said, I'm sorry. I was able to make it in on the last part of your all session at Bluestone.
Yes, sir.
And several of the teachers that I spoke with from Bluestone and Parkview, that was one of the major concerns from, from everyone that came to me was, we wanna make sure that we have adequate teaching space. I mean, again, for the teachers to be able to move around, for the kids not to be on top of each other. Because again, we're looking at increasing numbers in our classrooms by combining schools. I mean, we know that's gonna happen somewhat, so that was a real concern of theirs. And with that being concerned, I mean, that would be a concern of mine as well, to make sure that we not only require, meeting the requirements from the DOE. But also that we're meeting the teachers that have to be there every day and to feel like they're in an adequate space to be able to teach.
Yes, and, and we're, we totally agree and it needs to feel open too. So we're probably going to, I don't wanna get into the security discussion tonight, but we're probably going to recommend the inner wall be probably a solid wall. And the outer wall be all glass, so when you walk in the space, you don't feel like you're in a cocoon. So we, we need to be careful about that. So we need to balance security and, and, and appropriate environment for the students. We don't wanna send them to school and torture them because they feel like they're in a box, you know? We just don't wanna do that.
Is there a basic formula from the Department of Ed that says so many students should have so much space? And we can compare that when we go to the Board of Supervisors or to the community and say, we have an adequate amount here, but we need this much for the number of students?
Yes.
Because we, we're looking at 1,300 students that we're planning for right now. And that's, if, I mean, we have lost numbers over the past several years, but we don't have much room to grow with 1,300 students.
No, you don't.
We graduated 320.
Yes, we did.
25, so that times four, that's 1,300, that's about it. Yeah, that's exactly 1,300.
There's no room for growth.
You can't accept any more speed.
Uh, but the plan, the, the site plan is set so that with growth, we can add building space.
Yeah, we, we will illustrate projected future growth for additional classroom space.
So we, this plan is appropriate so that if we do have more growth, we can add without it looking un, like it was just added as a puzzle.
We'll make sure it looks all right. The, the biggest challenge is the core area for the school. Administration area will probably work out okay with a few additional students. Dining area, you can't squeeze that, you don't wanna go to four bells. So we would propose probably a few more square foot, square feet in the dining area so the kids aren't compressed there. And that's where a lot of schools have more trouble when the kids are pushed too tight together.
It's, it's a fair statement then that we have prepared for the minimum number of students that we can actually prepare for and space for that number of students.
Yeah, you, you, you don't wanna, you don't wanna squeeze it anymore. It would not be appropriate, in my opinion, to do that.
Well, that's 1,300, that's, I mean, that's really, that's really low, I mean, that's where we are right now.
Yeah, and again, that's so unfortunate because I had an opportunity to meet with, uh, two weeks ago, the lady from the State Department who's in with this FAST Act that's coming to Fort Pickett. And about 350 plus families relocating to Region 8. And, you know, we were, we're selling, we're selling Mecklenburg County, we were selling our schools, we were selling the, the opportunities of people being, you know, attending a smaller school. So I mean, again, I mean, we're setting ourselves up to lose right from the bat if we don't have any room to squeeze another 15 or 20 kids in. I mean, if we're gonna bust out the seams, right then, we would be doing ourselves an injustice by moving forward like this.
We, we hope to meet with you, Dr. Matney, if it's possible, next Wednesday or Thursday. And, and look at the programming and, and, and see how actually compressed you are to see if it has any flexibility based on your scheduling. But we've done a pretty, pretty tight assessment already, but we need to look at it in detail with you and your schedule and your actual situation to see if it has any flex.
Right.
So I really thank you for the opportunity to meet with you. And as a citizen of Mecklenburg, I wanna thank you for the service you do for us all. And I know you've put in many, many hours of stressful work trying to come up with the best solution. And, and you work, your work is much appreciated, thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Upton.
Thank you so much, you're welcome. So anything you can think of, if you come up with any more questions or anything that we can provide detailed information for certain cost breakdowns. I'd like to be able to furnish that to you and I can do that pretty quickly. And Mr. Edwards, we're going to, one way or the other, get our hands on a copy of the preliminary geotechnical report and to see if, if it's making an impact. But it would be, it would be amazing to me if they selected this as the best site, if it had a serious stone problem, but things happen sometimes.
Every time I build a house, I'm amazed. I hit rock on every one of them.
Thank you so much, we appreciate you and we will leave if that's okay. If you want us to stay for any questions, we'll do that.
Is the proposed schedule and timeline still applicable?
Uh, we are, we're a little bit beyond what you had originally proposed. But I think we're probably in a position that if we can work at some of the financial things, we should be able to get back on track pretty quickly, is that not correct?
And we're, we're actually doing some things beyond what the, the programming phase it is. So a lot of the stuff that we're doing is would normally be in schematic phase. So we're pushing as far, as hard as we can. But we really need to be able to get things going, the site survey and the geotechnical. For example, that's gonna take four, five weeks to get those reports. And, and we really, with this site, with the potential rock, we need to get that information done so that we are giving you real legitimate information that won't be a backup later on. So, uh, but right now, we're good. If we can meet within the next couple of weeks and, and, and refine the program.
Right.
And I, we're very, very close now, so I feel really good about it, but we still need to refine it a little bit. And then what we need to do is to detail these spaces so that you can look and say, hey, I need to. But we're, we're, we're still on schedule, but we gotta be careful.
And, and as you've mentioned, there are a couple of big issues. The biggest one being the budget question. The other one being the purchase of the land. And the third one being how long, how much longer. Of course, the purchase of the land is contingent upon the response from the Highway Department. So those are the three big issues that we are waiting on at this point.
Now, I would guess Mr. Carter probably has answers to the question with the V dot in the land purchase. Do you think he knows the answer at this point or is he looking for information? Do you want me to contact him and ask him?
Well, I don't, I know that Mr. Carter and I have had correspondence. About what has gone to them. I have not heard, he may have, I have not heard anything more about a date at which they expect to release the information from the Highway Department. I've just heard him say that it's moving along at the pace he expected, whatever that means.
Okay, all right. Well, we deal with what we have to deal with. I appreciate your time and I'm honored to be able to work with you and, and great people like you are for a great project like this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Upton. All right, uh, you still have the secondary handbook left?
Yes, we have, uh, there was a request by the Board members to have some discussion opportunities about the handbook. And Mr. Matney is, Dr. Matney is with us tonight to be able to have that discussion with us, with you. What, well, what you just did reminded me, can I get a copy of this latest rendering digitally? Thank you.
No. No.
Thank you. Dr. Matney? So at the last meeting, we gave members a copy of, uh, the proposed student handbook. And I know that two of you were not here. Do you have copies or just what's on the, you don't have them? Do we have any extra copies with you? For the two that were not here that, the other night?
Should have been on Board docs, on the agenda for the last meeting.
Yes.
Yes.
I was just thinking about, okay.
Don't have any extra paper copies.
But I thought that while we were having a special meeting, it would be a good time if there were questions. That we could have those questions brought up before we have. The June meeting, the regular June meeting is when we need to have a vote so that we can print them and get them in, into the school.
Where did we land with the backpacks? Since that seemed to be a contentious issue.
The backpack initiative in the student handbook is as it was at the beginning of the year, last year. During the year, there was a recommendation of the Board to change it to open the doors. The Safety Committee has made a recommendation that we go back to no backpack. They were okay with the water bottle, but no backpack. It's what the Safety Committee has brought to the table.
In the classroom, not, they can bring them into the school, keep them in the locker, but just not take them to the classroom.
That is correct. Now, the Board's stance right now is still that the students have access to the, to have backpacks all through the day. So if, if we need to know for this handbook, which way the Board, do you wanna go with the new recommendation of the Safety Committee to move back? Or do we wanna keep it as you voted?
Well, we were ready to move back and they didn't, then the principals didn't want to switch back again in the middle of the year. So I don't think there's a big objection to that. But I, I think my concern is the, that one time they allowed the little string bags for gym clothes. And I don't wanna, you know, I know this is anecdotal, this is just one student, but my, my son's a rule follower. They told him no backpacks. He carried his gym clothes in his hands, you know, and just, you know, so for the rule followers, is there gonna be something that they're allowed to carry for things like that? You know?
Just so I'm.
I tried to tell him, I said, I would have just, just take it and see if they say anything, but, but he won't do that.
If you put it on the front, you put your arms in it, it's a little longer backpack, it's a front pack.
All right, if I can talk him into that.
Well, just so, just so I'm clear, the Board voted on, the kids are allowed to have the backpacks in their class.
Yes.
In order to change that, the Board has to do a vote to reverse it.
That is correct.
A formal vote. Okay.
That is correct.
Well, don't we do that when we approve the handbook? If the handbook has the backpacks in it, then, and we approve the handbook, then that's, that's the vote, right? We don't have to approve everything in the back individually in the handbook.
We altered that, that handbook by that vote.
We did.
That's correct.
But, but the actual handbook was never actually changed because it would have cost, it would have required a new printing and there would be extra cost. It was a known fact. So in, in the document that you have now, because there was a recommendation of the Safety Committee, it still says no backpacks. Am I correct, Dr. Matney?
Well, there, there was no, there was no, um, um, we would need to, the easiest way for me to articulate it is if there were a change in the posture of the Board to permit backpacks. We would want to add something that makes it explicit that they could have backpacks that they could bring to their locker, but not to the classroom and that kinda thing. But I mean, we, we're waiting as, as, as the Handbook Review Committee for guidance from the Board on how you'd like us to do that. There's no, there's no, um, we're just waiting for guidance from you all on what you'd like us to do.
Well, I'm waiting for, I'd like to hear what the principal, what, what do they want? I mean, cause I, I don't, they know better than I do, I don't wanna tell them.
Principals are troubled by backpacks in the building.
They what's that?
Principals are troubled by backpacks in the building.
In the building at all.
And I think the, the list of reasons that I think were generated may be, of course, I was not here in this capacity. But there were some concerns that were documented by the principals, by our good superintendent when they were asked, what, what is the posture on backpacks? And I don't think those have changed dramatically from when they were promulgated before.
The Safety Committee made its decision based on the fact that there was a petition from teachers to go back to no backpacks.
In the building.
In the buildings. And that was supported by administration. When we had the change in the mid, middle of the year to allow them, and we gave them the opportunity, the principals basically said, we would prefer not to have backpacks, but we don't wanna change it now because.
Right.
We could not get it back in.
Yeah, I got that.
If we start, if we start the beginning of the year, then we will, they would continue.
Right.
To try to change it again mid-year is, is not what's there.
Mr. Nichols.
That's why the Safety Committee, but it's the Board's choice.
Was that all four schools? Teachers at all four schools?
The petition did not come from all four schools, no.
Where did the petition come from?
Petition came from Parkview Middle School.
Any other schools?
We did not get a petition from any of the other schools, no.
Okay.
But the Safety Committee was, didn't look at, I mean, they did look at that.
Who is the Safety Committee?
Kenny and Rob.
Okay.
Yes, the two that are not here tonight.
Yeah.
That'll be an easy vote.
Do backpacks, no backpacks, you almost have to put no string bags too. Because the kids use the string bags as backpacks when they encourage their backpacks.
And when, if they can't afford a backpack, they'll use a string bag.
What are we, are we, are they afraid of guns going into the schools in the backpacks? Is that what we're afraid of? Well, but if that's the case, it makes no sense to let them, take them to their locker if you're not gonna let them take them to the classroom. I mean, if I'm gonna bring a gun in, I'm gonna take it, it doesn't make any difference.
There's a second issue in the classroom, there was a space issue in the classroom.
Okay, so space is not.
Right, they set them in the aisles and they.
Well, I can't, and I cannot say that there's not a question about weapons in backpacks as well.
Right.
That was brought up as a concern.
Right, okay, that's what I was asking, you know.
Yes, but of all, another concern that was brought up in the petition was the issue of the space that it takes. And although there was not a petition, on the teacher advisory committee that I meet with, that was, that was an issue. It's not an issue in elementary. It's not an issue in elementary. It's an issue at the middle schools and the high schools.
Isn't it an issue because Parkview Middle School is borderline overcrowded?
Well, I think a petition could have come from that, yes.
Are there enough lockers at Parkview Middle School to accommodate the number of kids they have?
They do not have an adequate number of lockers at Parkview Middle School.
So even if the policy was to have those kids who brought a backpack to school to put it in the locker, the kids at Parkview Middle School that don't have a locker, what will they do with it then?
They'd have to resort to sharing lockers. And that's the only way you could meet the capacity right now for this number of students who need a locker.
Sharing lockers.
I don't agree with sharing lockers.
It's not ideal, that's for sure.
If Johnny brings something in school and I'm, you know, with him, I don't want to be held accountable for what he has and.
Right, but of course, the question was, how could we accommodate a number of lockers that fall short of? That's not an ideal solution, but.
It is a solution.
It is a potential response.
How many incidents or issues have we had with kids with backpacks in our four schools?
What kind of incidents are you?
What kind of incidents have we had related with kids bringing things in their backpacks at our four schools?
I don't, I don't know that off the top of my head. I can speak anecdotally that there have been situations where kids have brought things into school that they ought not to have, that are in fact violations of the code of conduct, which have led to disciplinary action via a backpack.
And that was the backpack being in the classroom, or in the locker room, or? First, do you have that, that data?
No, sir. Not, I mean, not, not, not before me this evening. I mean, I guess we could promulgate it.
But some of those items could have been carried in the pocket probably just as easily. I mean, if they had pot in their backpack, they could stick it in their pocket. So I guess the question is, how many times did they bring in something that, that they could only conceal in a backpack?
And brought into the classroom.
I would speak, if, if, the only thing I can give you this evening is anecdotal. Four months at Parkview Middle School, it was made manifest in, in, in both capacities. Things came in the building to the locker, in a, in a backpack to the locker. Sometimes it actually infiltrated into a classroom.
Will, will you be able to present data to the board?
I beg your pardon?
Can you, can you present data to the board at some point? I know you don't have it right now.
Right.
That will, that the safety committee can use to make their recommendation.
I can certainly look into it.
Because right now, we have a petition from teachers at Parkview Middle School.
That is correct.
Parkview Middle School does not have enough lockers to accommodate the number of students. So what is the, what is the safety committee's recommendation based upon to change the board's vote?
And I think that, that, just anecdotally, the teacher, the bigger problem for the teachers is in the classrooms. That's what I'm hearing from the teachers. Their big concern, I know the safety committee has gone one step a little, a little further. But teachers, their biggest complaint is the clutter in the classroom and how it crowds the classroom. It's been in the classroom and in the hallways.
In the hallways.
In the hallways.
The hallways, because the hallways are narrow. Students have backpacks, they bump into one another and, you know.
So if you say no backpacks, how do they carry theirs? I'm just not familiar, how does that work? You just carry everything?
Between classes, they go and exchange classes for block one. And then put that in the locker and get my books for block two, and then go back to my locker between two and three, and.
That causes them to be late class and. Now, you've got problems knowing not which way.
So the safety, so the safety committee's recommendation, I guess, was that we follow it what, like it was at the beginning of the school year, correct?
That's correct. I, I've not spoken to the safety committee, so.
No, that, that is correct.
Just to throw one more thing out, if we're going to do away with backpacks, we have to take a strong look at large pocketbooks. Because that could be the same thing as a bookbag, some of those.
That's definitely discrimination, I guess.
Yes, about as large as a small bookbag.
A man with a backpack, you don't stand a chance.
Well, I mean, again, you know.
In person.
Yeah, the ladies, you know, need a little small handbag of some sorts, you know.
Sure, there's no, there's no problem.
But, and, and I guess in watching TV, in this, you know, I had a little conversation with Mr. Campbell, and, and watching TV and the latest school shooting that we've had. I mean, that kid, you know, you know, brought a weapon he put together, and, you know, pow, pow, pow. And I guess we're just looking at moving forward, what, you know, a deterrent for a child to be able to bring something into the classroom in a bookbag.
I think that incident, his bookbag was in his locker. He asked to be excused from his classroom, went and got it out of his locker.
We've got to start somewhere. We could discuss it all night, but again, I guess that was their vision in moving forward into the new schools as well. You know, as a deterrent.
We, we stand ready to do the will of the board. Again, there, there was a petition, as you know. There were some safety concerns. That was reiterated.
Right now.
When, when we hold the principals, and if we defer to principals' perspectives, there are concerns about backpacks.
Can we hold this off and have a discussion among the board? Come up with a decision and then get back to you? Because as it stands right now, I think we are all indecisive.
Well, the, the reality is that this is.
We're going to pass it next month.
We, the June board meeting is the time we need to have a decision and vote. This was just an opportunity to have some of this discussion, and we can continue to have discussion over the next few weeks.
I think that would be wise.
Wanda, do you have?
Yes, sir. Dr. Matney, I'm looking at the student handbook, I think. And I, there's a section on page twenty-one. Twenty-one of the actual handbook is actually page twenty-two in our board docs that describes lockers and how they are to be used. I, I've looked through every page. Where would I find the policy on a backpack? There, there is some policy about what they can bring on school buses. But I'm having trouble finding anything in our handbook in regard to backpacks.
I don't believe there is one.
Ah, that's what this brings me to. We don't really have a policy, because it's not in our handbook. So.
It was, it, it went, you know, when this was crafted, I was not here, there was no illusion of backpacks.
So this is an interpretation of what's in here about lockers. Because in the lockers, on page, what did I, page, I say it was twenty-two. It's a description of the lockers. Lockers should be used to store books, gym clothes, gym clothes, paper, school materials and school supplies. Money and valuables should be stored in lockers with locks that are locked. Right now, there are a lot of kids who do not put a lock on their locker. Students should be encouraged to not tell others the combination to their locks. Additionally, students should not share lockers or store, store other students' belongings in their locker. Each student is responsible for the care of that locker and is liable for damage done. But it doesn't say anything in this handbook that I'm aware of, of bringing a backpack to school, or what you do with it once you get there.
So why do we vote on that policy? Why do we vote on it then if it wasn't in the manual?
I think the question came up whether or not students could be allowed to have backpacks in the classroom. That question came up.
Well, I think.
Because it was being enforced as if it wasn't a policy. They weren't allowed to have them.
It's a principal, maybe it's a principal and the building decision.
Well, it's not a principal and decision now. At, at the vote that you all had in November, it was determined that they would be allowed to have backpacks in school.
And water bottles.
And water bottles.
But the basis for them not to have backpacks came from where?
The basis, the question about not having backpacks simply was, in raising the question to say that they could, then students and others recognized that the principals were enforcing that they would not. Now, that was last year. This year's handbook apparently does not have anything in about it. So if the safety committee is recommending that it be placed in there, you would have to vote for it to be placed back.
So can we see what the proposed policy would be? They'll write it up or something?
Yes.
Because I hesitate to go against what the principals want, because they have to manage it every day. You know, that's their problem every day. So I hesitate to go against what they want.
And I will poll the principals and have a determination from them of what their desire would be.
But I think Mr. Palmer and Mr. Honeycutt brought up two points. Mr. Palmer brought up the point of large purses, bags. Mr. Honeycutt brought up the issue of young ladies, you know, limiting the size of their bag. Well, we had a discussion earlier about Title IX, a satchel with a male student. If they choose to wear a satchel, it's a handbag. So, and they're do that to circumvent not having a backpack. They're going to wear, have a satchel. So I think we need to at least consider that as well. And, Mr. Dr. Matney, if we can have some data, specific data. I know we have a request from one school right now, a written request. And that school is, doesn't have enough lockers to accommodate the number of students. Also, we need to consider other bags that are being brought to school. Golf bags, softball, baseball bags, that are too large for the lockers and they're currently being held in the back of classrooms. So I look forward to further discussion.
I'll do my best. I, I, I don't want to make a promise I can't keep. We'll try to glean the data, but I'm not sure on disciplinary referrals. It'll necessarily speak to where the object began. And I don't know that we can differentiate, again, beyond anecdotally, just want to be honest, between golf bags, satchels, and point well taken. But again, I think there was a response to the board action in October before I arrived. Principals had concerns. And then it was reiterated with the petition from Parkview Middle. And I will share with you, and the four principals with whom I work closely, there are notable and lingering concerns.
I, I understand the fear. We can't live in the world of fear. I do understand also, school visits. We visited other schools that have recently been built, which are larger and has more space, and hopefully will be there one day. And I believe those schools have backpacks. The kids can take the backpacks from class to class. I, I hate to make a rule or policy that for the kids who want to carry their gym clothes with them or books, that they can't. That's all I have.
Mr. Richard?
Yes, ma'am.
The, the agenda last month listed this particular handbook for us to consider for approval at our next board meeting. So if, if, if that's going to change, that language will have to be included before we can.
Right, we should see the policy before we have to vote on it. So could we put off the vote for the handbook?
Well, the handbook has to be printed in a timely manner so we can be ready at the beginning of August, really before that. The handbook has to go out for printing. Have, is, is there a problem with us having this policy and letting our building principals determine whether they want to allow it or not?
It better be consistent.
Yeah, let's get ready to say, Parkview can't carry that backpacks, we can't.
Yeah, they'll complain, but there's an issue, you know, Parkview Middle is, is a face issue. It's an issue we don't have at the other schools, yeah.
And the students know what goes on. You, Janet County, they did it down there, they better do it at this end, and vice versa.
And approval of this document as presented a couple of weeks ago, there's no prohibition on, on backpacks. Again, we could craft some language that does make, in fact, I worked on some proposed language that if the board wanted to do that, how it might read, but that could be added. But there would have to be a specific prohibition that would be added to the current document.
Mr. Chairman, let me address what has been said there. We can't live in fear. I grant you that, Mr. Sturdivan, and I agree with you on that. One thing is, if we wanted to use backpacks, we could come up with a metal detector at the door. Now, I know we go on above and we talking about money here. However, if it is something that we're totally afraid of, and I, and, you know, explosive and whatever, there are things that still could be brought in that would not be detect. However, that would be a start, and then students could bring their backpacks. They have to go through the metal detector in order to get into the building. There are many schools that have that policy in effect. Then that would eliminate the part of trying to decide whether or not young ladies can bring a big bag in or a small bag indifferent, and whether or not students can bring in a bookbag. And bookbags has been a problem for many years. When I was in the administrative position, we had the problem with them leaving third block going to lunch and dropping their bookbags at the door as you go into the cafeteria. They tried to put them up on the stands and tell they fill that up, and then they would put them in the floor on the side. So it's not a new thing. It's just a problem that we have to deal with.
Mr. Chairman, that part I just said. And I want to take a spin off of what Mr. Palmer and Mr. Sturdivan said. And I can appreciate, again, what Mr. Sturdivan said, as far as we cannot live in fear. I totally agree. But this is my concern as a board member. You know, we, we see this happening around the country every month, every week, you know, just depending on when you're watching the news. At what point do we, are we going to stand up and say, well, we're trying to do something to eliminate a possibility of something happening, or either wait until someone unloads a gun and a bookbag? And then we say, oh, yeah, well, you know, we've lost fifteen kids that have been shot. We need to do something now. And again, that, that's, and I've had some discussion with some of the other board members. I mean, I feel like we need to be putting something in place now, along with what I said with Mr. Palmer. Again, let them bring the bookbags in, but we need metal detectors now. We need these things to eliminate the possibility of bringing these things. I don't want to wait till something happens and say, well, yeah, we need to look into it now. I want to do something now about it to protect our children.
Right. I think everybody wants that, but I think statistically, schools are some of the safest places you can be. I mean, they get a lot of press, these, these school shootings, get a lot, a lot of press, and they're horrible tragic things. But, you know, I don't spend, I say my kids at school every day, and I don't worry about them for a minute. You know, I think we take a lot of safety precautions already. You know, we have resource officers, they have teachers who care a lot about them.
And, and again, I'm not, I totally agree, but I'm just, that's the way I'm looking at it. I would rather be preventative and do something now instead of waiting till something happened and then say, well, what are we going to do now? And that, that's just my opinion.
Yeah, you're right. But every, when you have finite amount of money to spend, anytime you do something like that, you're taking away from something else. So you have to decide what, you know, I, I agree that that's extremely important. But what do you, what do you want to fund less? What do you want to take away from in order to pay for that?
I, I want to make sure that every child that walks into that building is safe. First and foremost.
All right, but at, at the cost of what? What will we take away from to put metal detectors in the buildings?
And think of the doors we have at the school.
Well, yeah, I agree, but I'm just, again, I'm just thinking out loud, and I'd rather do something now than after something happens. And that's the way, that's my approach. That's my opinion.
Yeah, but we can't be ruled by, just, yeah, I agree, but it can't, we can't just move completely on emotion. And I'm with Dale. And, and you have to have, it's easy to identify problems, but you need to, we need solutions to those problems too. Like I said, if you want to put metal detectors in, that would be great. But what, what are we not going to put in? What are we not going to pay for?
And we'll need some assistance getting kids in the building in a timely way if we're going to.
And that doesn't alleviate the backpack in the classroom problem, which was, to teachers, a bigger issue. But if, if we take this back to the teachers for some recommendation, maybe they can try to come up with something, some sort of compromise that addresses some issues instead of an all or nothing approach. Maybe they could be encouraged to say.
Well, of course, it's going to be very difficult to get back to teachers in the summer.
Right.
With so many different schedules.
Oh, yeah. I mean, your advisory committee or whoever you use.
We're, we're looking, as I understand it, we will be looking for data from disciplinary records to see what we can come up with as far as some actual data. We will actually have a couple of proposals, or a proposal from the safety committee as far as backpack elimination would be concerned. And if you want to do at the June meeting, you would be able to approve this, the student handbook as is. And then you can vote to add a part, if you were to choose to add a part related to backpacks.
So as is, there's not going to be a backpack policy?
As is, there would not be a backpack.
As is, without a specific prohibition, you would continue in the status quo, which I would be allowed to bring a backpack and use it throughout the day.
So maybe they'll bring, will you bring a, a proposed backpack policy, and then we just.
Yes, that would be, that would be the second part that you could add after passing the current standard. And that's all?
Well, there's another issue in the student handbook, student cell phones. Currently, it talks about the cellphone, the student may not turn on or use the device during an official instructional day, to include smartwatches. So the cellphone cannot even be turned on. Is that going to be realistic and enforceable?
Nope.
I, and I only ask the question because everyone has smartwatches now. Fitbits. All those things are linked to their phone. How will it be enforceable and consistent to all students?
Yeah, that, that is the exact verbiage of what was. Yeah, that is the exact verbiage of what was there before with the recommendation from a couple of principals about the smartwatch. I had questions about that myself. But that is the status quo when it comes to the school division's posture on cell phones. That they are not to be engaged, they're to be turned off throughout the duration of the day.
Unless the instructor were to have a reason to...
Unless the instructor gives the green light. But of course, that's becoming more and more infrequent with the variety of devices that are available to children. There's not an instructional task that I can think of where they can't have access to technology through a Chromebook or an iPad or a desktop or a laptop where they would actually need a cellphone. Or where they would actually be able to, where they would actually need to go on their cellphone.
So is the policy now that they have to leave their cellphone in their locker? Is that, is that what the policy says? I don't have it in front of me.
Right, I think that's what would be preferred, but it should not be visible. So you can, I mean, ideally, it would be put away, but it can be on your person. It just has to be not visible.
And what's the not visible part? The size of some of these cell phones? They're clearly visible.
Even if it's in your pocket.
Even if it's in your pocket, you're going to see it, the iPhone pluses or whatever, or the new galaxies. And I know that the policy is, it talks about lunchroom, you can't have it during lunch. Because it's been said the kids are going to text the kids that are in the classroom. It has also been asked, I believe a student came to the board, asked about whether there be opportunities in a school to utilize those devices. Almost like a free period during lunchtime, or, I don't know, during PE. I don't know. But the question is, with technologies here, a lot of the things we've seen from school were captured on smartphones. Both good and bad. But should we look to a point where we're going to allow access or allow the kids to use, legally use their cell phones at any point in the school? Besides going to the bathroom, and when they get in the bathroom, they use their cellphone?
Again, I'm trying to follow language as I inherited it from the fall. I would hazard a guess that the situations you're talking about, Mr. Sturdivan, unless instructed by the teacher, would invite, allow for some type of open space, green zone, library, lunchroom, if, if the policy, if this board wanted to have that kind of policy. But I think that was trying to be more of an elastic clause to cover the fact that, again, if you're instructed by the teacher, you have the right to do that. If the librarian wants to have a green zone where you can use your cellphone. If you wanted to make the cafeteria a green zone. My experience with cellphone policies, both here and in other places, is, again, it has to be under the direction of a bona fide instructor where the phone is being invoked for some kind of academic purpose.
And I guess that would be a, I mean, we pretty much are like ninety-nine point nine percent of the one-on-one initiative as far as our Chromebooks and so forth in our classrooms, correct?
We have greater than a hundred percent access to Chromebooks in our schools.
So I guess my question would be, Dr. Matney, on a secondary level, is why would the teachers need to include that in their lesson plans to pull those phones out and use them for instructional purposes? If we have moved forward in spending monies to make sure that we had over a hundred percent initiative for our students?
You're harkening back to a comment I made before this body a couple of weeks ago at our last board meeting about there's not an instructional task that I can think of where a teacher would actually need to invoke the use of a cellphone with a one-to-one initiative and the like to give them access to technology.
But is the policy telling kids they can't use or have them turn on smartphone or smartwatch enforceable? This, I'm just, I'm more inclined to say it should be an opportunity for the students at some point during the day. We know the students are going to use the cell phones. Why not, as we're preparing our kids, truly preparing our kids for the workforce, if you tell a child, no, you can't use it, and we know they're using it, why not work, have a partnership, and have an opportunity that they can use it during a certain time? They could use it to text their parents. They can use it to text other peers. We know they're doing it anyway, but can we have a time at some point, maybe at lunch, that those kids who need to check their emails, and kids do have their own emails now? The purpose of the one-to-one, I thought, is to give all kids access to the internet and technology that may not have it on their own. A lot of kids have their smartphones, and they don't have to tap into the school network. But do we give them an opportunity to have a free time to use their cell phones and other devices? That's my question.
And I guess for me, it goes back to, because I had teachers, I asked about the bags and the cell phones. And they said, well, they would rather see the cell phones go away than the book bags. And that's what I heard from most of them. And I guess my question would be also that Mr. Dalton, our maintenance director here, we have just spent, I forget how much money, to put in all of these. And I, in talking to the parents, too, let me back up a little bit. It is a safety issue for their children and concern, and I totally get that. I mean, not having children, I do get what they're saying. That, you know, they want to be able to reach their children, or if they have a situation where they're being held hostage, they want to be able to call out. But I thought that's why, Mr. Dalton, we were implementing this new phone system in our schools, that each teacher will have the ability to dial out on nine-one-one or push an indecisive or a panic button or something somewhere. I don't know why we'd have spent all that money if we would continue to allow those things to happen. And again, I was looking at it from a safety issue, and this is why they said we were spending those monies moving forward and putting these phones in the classrooms.
Are they just going into the elementary schools? Or are they going in the high schools and secondary school, the secondary schools?
They're going everywhere.
Right, this next year?
Yes, sir.
So the beginning of the year, each classroom is going to have a cell, a telephone in?
IP phone, IP phone.
I thought it was going to be done in phases.
That's what Mr. Dalton said. They were doing it this summer. Now, again, that's what I was told. I don't know how true that is.
The security grant covered, only covered the elementary schools.
He said, he said secondary. He said secondary.
I don't think it was just a security grant. I think he used some of his money to do that.
Yes, he did. It was, it was some of our monies, too.
It was local money for that part. The security grant was for the cameras and a few, and they might have used some of it for...
And again, I'm going to go back to the part with, again, and I agree with Mr. Sturdivan and listening to what Mr. Palmer said. You know, and I keep going back to the TV. I watch a lot of news. So, you know, in the cases that we've had, Mr. Sturdivan.
I was going to say, what channel were you watching?
It's just, I love Fox News and CNN. I watch all the news channels. I love news. I just do. So, in the cases where there were dual shooters, they use their cell phones to give access points where, you know, I'm here, I'm there. I'm not sure exactly how it all went down, but I have seen scenarios where there's, that is happening. Again, I'm playing the part of children's safety where this, where this is concerned. And everything we can do to protect our children, that's what I want to do as a board member. I know the rest of everybody does, too, but at some point, we've got to stand up and do something. We just can't keep sitting back and waiting, again, for something to happen and then say, well, now, what are we going to do?
And maybe I missed, you said there's a high school case where the students use cell phones to communicate with access points? It was two shooters?
There are a couple of cases, there were more than one shooter.
And you said they use cell phones to...
Again, that's what the news portrayed, that they were able to access, or, you know, we're here, we're there.
Was this recent?
CNN, it wasn't Fox.
This has happened some time ago. This wasn't recent.
Okay, okay.
I would just offer two things. I know it was the word I'm looking for here, compelling to me when we met with business leaders in the context of the design of a new building. And our superintendent asked, I thought, very, very aptly of those employers, could you just, again, as we seek to prepare young people for the world of work and responsibility, could you just share with me your policy as a corporate entity, as a retail agency, whatever the case may be? Could you share with me what your posture is on cell phones? And again, very compelling to me was the response almost to a person in this very room that evening, what, about eight weeks ago, was cell phones verboten. You don't have a cellphone at work. We want an engaged employee. They may have a communication device, but it's more for we can track what they're doing and make sure that they're in the place they're supposed to be as an employee. But again, and talk about batting a thousand, a hundred percent, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Nichols, again, when they said preparing for workforce, cell phones are verboten. I would also be remiss not to share with you, for your consideration as a former principal and as one now representing for hard-working principals, the use of cell phones on school property may very well be the most single impediment to instruction in the building every day. Again, I'll only speak anecdotally here during my time at Parkview Middle School, but it would be reminiscent of my time in other, in other division. Our administrators are being taken away from the crux, and the real reason they're there, instruction, by dealing with threats, dealing with bullying, dealing with unsavory types of behaviors. We spoke before of Title IX, sexual innuendo. We are spending an inordinate amount of time following up on matters that disrupt the school day terribly, in my humble opinion, looking at what is found on cell phones and made manifest by children having access to those cell phones throughout the day. So again, I would, I would be remiss in my capacity not to share that with you for your consideration as policymakers. Again, they are terribly problematic. Yes, ma'am.
There's another area where we open ourselves up to, when we do allow phones, is that we cannot guarantee what network they are using. And the Children's Internet Protection Act requires that we filter any network that a child is using in our building. And if they bring their own device, again, that's an area where we cannot police. We can't control, and I guess it's then between them and the person who, who provided the phone to them. But no personal wireless connections can be used in our buildings.
Very apt. And again, I'll just speak anecdotally. Spoke to a young man in the last two weeks that said he, on a daily basis, not here, but I dare say it's probably accurate here, that he sees at least one or two instances of a child with their own personal device where there's no firewall that prevents them from navigating or surfing certain sites, where they're promulgating pornography for students to look at under the guise of using their cellphone for responsible purposes. And I would be, again, remiss, and I dare say naive, to say that that's not going on. Again, in disruption of the instructional day, in compromise of the engaged learner, I have you six and a half hours a day. I trust your mom and dad to take care of the other seventeen and a half, but during those six and a half hours a day, I need you engaged. And I'm not going to be, again, somebody who's recently with me, the term addiction. But I'll stop short of that and say an utter reliance and inability to help myself when I have that cellphone with me. Children are focused on the cellphone in many cases, and again, in my humble opinion, are more focused on the cellphone than what's being set forth in the way of academics.
And that's the way it's being presented, that's the policy that's being presented us in the handbook?
Yes, sir.
So we can either vote for it or...
Yes, sir, which is, which is a reiteration of exactly what has been done before and in keeping with the code of conduct.
All right.
Yes, sir.
Okay, are we, can we move on to our next, or is there anything else?
Is there anything else?
No.
Anything else in the handbook that we need to discuss besides backpacks and cell phones?
That's all of my informational items. We are in a position that we can move on to the closed session.
Okay. Yes. Oh, yeah, we have one action item first.
Oh, excuse me.
Will we take a break prior to the closed session?
Yeah, let's take a break.
Gavin, we need to vote on this one thing first, and then you can go do that.
So, no, you can't.
You can't. I'll be right behind you.
Kidneys are full.
I'll be right behind you.
All right, we have the item of the Bluestone High School Yovisso field trip to Harrisonburg, Virginia. Do I have a motion to approve this overnight travel?
So moved.
I have a motion for Mr. Honeycutt, seconded by Mr. Palmer. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes. All right, now, the closed session, if we can go ahead and go into closed session, then we can walk out of here, right? We can do it in here, right?
You can...
Okay, all right, well, let's just take a break then.
Five minutes, please.
All right, so the, may I have a motion that the school board convenes a closed meeting for personnel matters regarding resignations, retirements, supplements, adjustments, employments, grievances and discipline pursuant to Code of Virginia, Section 2.23711A1, matters regarding the acquisition of real property pursuant to the Code of Virginia, Section 2.23711A3, and to discuss the architect's contract pursuant to the Code of Virginia, Section 2.23711A29.
So moved.
I have a motion for Ms. Bailey, seconded by Ms. Garner. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes. All right, we're in closed session, so we can...